Hybrid Virtual Planning Commission Meeting of January 7th, 2021. If we could stand for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
The life of the United States of America is the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, infinite, equal, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, um, we're gonna have the roll call.
Jamie Gerardi?
Here.
Michael Cox?
Here.
Peter Hanson?
Here.
Roberto Saez?
Here.
Christopher Poole?
Here.
Chris Williams?
Here.
Chairman Charles Gray?
I'm here.
All right, and, um, do we have proof of publication?
Yes. The items were published in the Tampa Bay Times on December 16, 2020, and on December 23rd, 2020.
Okay, and we have some minutes to be approved. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of, October 8th, and the 22nd, and November the 5th?
So moved, Chris Poole?
Second.
Chris Williams?
Second, Jamie Gerardi.
Okay, motion is second, any further discussion, all in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Rocco?
Yeah.
Okay. Jamie Gerardi?
Aye.
Michael Cox?
Aye.
Peter Hanson?
Aye.
Roberto Saez?
Aye.
Christopher Poole?
Aye.
Chris Williams?
Aye.
Chairman Charles Gray?
Aye.
Okay, um, for those of you who will be attending the meeting, uh, today, the Planning Commission is appointed by the Board of County Commissioners, and we meet twice monthly. We serve as the local planning agency, and we hold public hearings, and transmit to the Board of County Commissioners recommendations on a comprehensive plan, land development code amendments, rezonings, and conditional use requests. Planning Commission is the final decision-making body for special exceptions, certain appeals, variance requests, and certain alternative standard requests. However, final decisions may be appealed to the Board of County Commissioners. If anyone is in opposition to any comprehensive plan amendment, land development code amendment, rezoning, conditional use, or any item where the Planning Commission transmits a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners, it's important for you to attend the appropriate Board of County Commission meeting. For those of you not familiar with the format of our meetings, we have several segments, continuances, consent, and regular items. Uh, it's been our custom to approve a request for a continuance by the applicant or the staff unless there are extenuating circumstances, such as the convenience of the affected parties. Uh, we have consent, uh, where items that have been received, no letters of objection from the public or from the staff, will be placed, and those items will be placed on the consent agenda and read item by item. If you wish an item to be pulled from the consent agenda, notify us by either raising your hand or advising us over the microphone, and we'll pull the item for discussion. Then we have regular items, and those are the items which are not continued or on consent, and we'll be hearing those in full and hearing the applicant and any respondents. Applicants will have three minutes to make their presentation, and questioners or objectors will have three minutes to present their concerns. I don't believe we've had any requests. Well, I have had one request for extra time, right?
Mr. Chair, there is one request for additional time for item P4.
Okay.
Twenty minutes of time.
Okay.
That's been granted.
And typically, before we start the regular meeting, we have the meeting open for public comment. For anything that's not on the agenda today, do we have anybody here for public comment?
I have been informed there is no one at the kiosk for public comment. We also do not have any letters, or any emails, or any items to read into the record on non-public hearing items.
Okay, thank you Denise. All right, then I guess we can begin. I'm gonna have, we're going to need each person to be sworn, and we'll do that before or as you come to the podium to speak. Okay?
Great, um, thank you, Planning Commission members. Denise Hernandez, Planning and Development. First item on the agenda is item PC1, and that's PDD 217511, in the name of Margaret C. Delavecchia, Hope Youth Ranch. It's for a private school in an AR agricultural residential district, and the special exception comes to you with a recommendation of approval with conditions as included in your agenda packet.
All right.
The applicants are here for any questions you may have. We have not received any letters of objection, or there is no one at the public comment kiosk to speak on the item.
All right, then let's move to the next one.
Following item is PC2. It's a zoning amendment, PDD 217510, J-Mar North RV Resort. It's for a zoning amendment from MF1, multifamily medium-density district, and C2 general commercial district, to a C2 general commercial district, and it comes to you with a recommendation of approval. Um, I have been notified that there was no one at the kiosk, and we have not received any emails of objection on the item, and the applicant is available for any questions.
All right, are there any questions from Mathias? If not, I assume there's no comment from the applicant, so we'll just continue on.
And that is the end of your consent agenda.
Okay. So do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Peter Hanson makes a motion to approve the consent agenda as stated.
Okay, and do I hear a second?
Second, Chris Poole?
Jamie Gerardi.
Okay, so by roll call, we'll vote.
Jamie Gerardi?
Jamie?
Jamie Gerardi?
Aye.
Michael Cox?
Aye.
Peter Hanson?
Aye.
Roberto Saez?
Aye.
Christopher Poole?
Aye.
Chris Williams?
Aye.
Chairman Charles Gray?
Aye.
All right.
Okay, we'll move on to item P3.
Okay.
Item P3 is PDD 217506. It's for trust number 7541027, Land Service Corporation trustee, for a change in zoning from AR agricultural residential, AC agricultural district, and C2 commercial district, general commercial district, sorry, to a C2 general commercial district and an I1 light industrial park district. Um, the property is located in, um, on the northeast corner of the intersection of I-75 and Blanton Road in the northeast part of Pasco County. It contains 89.074 acres and is undeveloped. The applicants proposed to develop the site in conformance with C2 general commercial district and I1 light industrial park district. The applicant has also volunteered to record deed restrictions restricting, limiting the uses on the property. The surrounding area is characterized by residential uses and agricultural pursuits at the moment. The future land use on the property is EC and AG. Um, on December 8th, the Board of County Commissioners approved a comprehensive plan amendment for the future land use on the site from EC and AG to IL and COM. And if the zone, the subject zoning is approved, it will not take effect until such time as the appeal period on the companion comprehensive plan amendment has ended. As stated previously, the applicant has volunteered a deed restriction for the C2 portion of the property, limiting the uses as follows: limiting the square footage on C2 to 140,000 square feet, prohibiting multifamily apartments, prohibiting auto towing and connected storage of vehicles, prohibiting yard trash disposal facilities, prohibiting construction and demolition debris disposal facilities, prohibiting truck stops. The applicant has also volunteered a deed restriction for the I1 portion of the property, which basically limits the uses on I1 portion to 500,000 square feet, prohibiting towing or connected storage of vehicles, prohibiting yard trash disposal facilities, prohibiting construction and demolition debris disposal facilities, also including a 25-foot setback along an adjacent parcel, which shall remain as a natural undisturbed area except as necessary for fence installation and maintenance, tying property to grade, and installation maintenance of any required landscape buffer. The subject site is located in northeast Pasco Rural Protection Overlay District, Land Development Code 604. Although right now there are no design standards for commercial development, they have not been adopted as of this time, the lack of standards does not preclude the property from developing commercially. Here's the surrounding zoning, as stated, you know, agricultural districts, AC and AR surrounding it. Some of the property does have a C2 general commercial district designation. The land use right now, as stated, is EC, but it was changed to IL and COM, but the appeal period has still not passed. And this shows the access to the property, and the recommendation on this item is approval. And, um, we do not have anyone at the public comment kiosk at the moment, um, and the applicant and I am also here for any questions that you may have.
Okay. All right, so any questions? Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes. Who is that? Is that Robert?
Somebody that spoke at the last meeting on this, I think the applicant should have been offered to have said at the last meeting.
Yes, would the applicant have anything to say?
Hi, this is Barbara Littlehite, I have not been sworn yet.
Okay. If you raise your right hand.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, so hope you got?
I did.
Thank you.
Barbara Littlehite, 5327 Grand Boulevard, North Yorkie, um, for the applicant. This is our fourth public hearing on the property. We had three public hearings on the comprehensive plan amendment, as Denise has explained, was adopted by the board on the 8th of December, um, to change the COM plan to IL and COM. Um, this body heard the COM plan amendment sitting as the LPA, and found the requested COM plan amendment, um, consistent with the COM, consistent with the comprehensive plan, and recommended that the board adopt it, which they did on December 8th. At the last Planning Commission, um, hearing, we requested a continuance, but one of the neighbors, Mr. Dukowitz, you'll recall, was at your, um, kiosk, and was, you know, asked if he wanted to speak at that hearing, um, or the continued hearing, which is today, and he did speak, and I think that's what David's referring to. Um, we have reviewed, I've reviewed multiple times now, Mr. Dukowitz's, um, allegations, positions regarding the comprehensive plan and the like, and staff has as well. We have had them in both the Planning Commission, he had a written, what he would call a brief, and, um, as well as at the board, we reviewed his brief. He's not a land use attorney, but he is an attorney, and he happens to own adjacent property. And so we've reviewed those, and, um, he has, what I would call cherry-picked the COM plan, um, doing COM planning for as many years as I have, 20 years, um, and actually being, uh, writing most, a lot of the comprehensive plan in 2006, I'm very familiar with the comprehensive plan. And I would kind of characterize what he does as cherry-picking and then misapplying language. People do that often, but don't understand COM plan construction. He is not a planning expert or a land use attorney. Um, for example, he referred you to a transitional land use chart that applies to comprehensive plan amendments, but you have rezoning before you today, um, not a comprehensive plan amendment, and that chart that he refers you to, on its face specifically doesn't apply to the northeast Pasco rural area. The proposed, despite his assertions, and if you have any specific questions, from staff and I, we could go through those, but, um, I would say that the zoning districts are consistent with IL and COM. The I1 is the zoning district that is compatible with the IL land use designation, and C2 is the zoning district, including zoning district that is compatible with the COM land use designation. Land use industrial and agricultural districts, adjacencies are an interstate, an interchange, Blanton Road, and agricultural districts. Light industrial and agricultural districts are compatible. The COM plan only prohibits heavy industrial adjacent to residential areas, and residential area is not defined to include agricultural districts in any event. The, um, Land Development Code sets out standards, performance standards and buffers for light industrials next to agricultural districts. We'll have, this project will have to comply with the performance standards in that, in the IL district, storage and waste disposal, coverage regulations, yard regulations, height regulations. In addition, it, we'll need to comply, we'll have to comply with the northeast Pasco overlay, which is additional level of regulation dealing with the corridor, Blanton corridor, or the scenic corridor, quarter, additional quarter buffing requirements, building buffer requirements, and I understand staff is working on a commercial aspect, regulations relating to northeast Pasco development that would apply to this project as well, um, once those are adopted as we go through the development review process. In addition to the land development regulations for IL and C2, as well as the special regulations for northeast Pasco, as currently adopted and as proposed to be adopted, we also have agreed to some deed restrictions that are very noteworthy. Um, we have agreed to limit the amount of square footage on both the industrial property and the commercial property. Under the I1 district, we could have had 1.2 million square feet of industrial. We have, um, limited that by deed restriction to 500,000 square feet, and I could also tell you that under EC, EC would have allowed heavy industrial uses and light industrial uses at a 300% lot coverage. Under IL and I1, we're limited to a 50% lot coverage. And commercial, um, the C2 district would allow 239,000. We've deed restricted that to 140,000. And again, under EC, the commercial aspect of EC would have been allowed to develop at 300% lot coverage, and under C2, we're limited to 50%. So not only have we limited any potential for heavy industrial uses that would have been allowed under EC, we've also limited our ability to do industrial. We've agreed to deed restrictions as staff has went, as Denise Hernandez has went through, you've seen those. And noteworthy is that we did specifically look at the adjacency to Mr. Dirkowitz's property and the buffer there. Now, I think you might have had a reference in your agenda packet to an email from a citizen. My client, um, has, did clear the timber on his property, but purposely left existing vegetation as a buffer to Mr. Dukowitz, and while we are under code would be allowed to remove those trees and do a type B buffer, which is a 15-foot buffer, we voluntarily deed restricted the property so that for 25 feet, we're gonna keep what the client had already kept and keep that natural buffer, which exceeds the code requirement. With that, um, we appreciate staff's work on this. We, oh, actually, we actually, one other thing I want to move, that's also noteworthy, is although there are no design standards for any commercial industrial development, at this time in northeast Pasco, we did agree to some addition, some design standards in our deed restriction for the industrial property for buildings that are gonna front I-75. So we've worked hard, you know, to, with staff, um, on this, and I think it's exactly the type of development that we hear the county needs and wants. Um, we actually removed the residential component of EC, when we took away EC from the property. So unlike a lot of other interchanges that had been, and, you know, had been developed with residential uses, we took the ability to do, and actually the mandatory requirement in EC to do residential, and so this property is purely non-residential, um, and we'd ask that you also, like staff, uh, support the rezoning of the property.
Okay. Uh, any questions?
Sure.
Yes.
So I don't know if this is for staff or Barbara. Barbara, this is Chris Williams. You mentioned, and just, this is my curiosity. So you mentioned, um, design standards in regards, and I saw that, um, things that were facing I-75 couldn't have, um, overhead doors facing I-75, et cetera. What's, what's the rationale behind that?
Well, we worked with staff. Staff had pointed out that this property is visible from I-75. We have over, what, a mile and a half of frontage on 75, and our property goes all the way to the Hernando County line, and then from a mile and a half down to this interchange. And so staff wanted to work with us to see how we could, um, have our buildings present to 75, as opposed to backing up with maybe an overhead door. We would present it in a, in a manner that had, um, it wasn't the back of the building, it was the front of the building, and it was a defined front of building that would face I-75. And so we worked with staff on that. That's actually what caused our continuance, was so we could have time, and it was the holidays as well, um, so we could have time to work on that with staff.
I guess my only concern about that, and again, I don't think it applies probably in this case, but maybe y'all can tell me, you know, is, is it gonna look better from 75 than it does from the other way? And on the other side, are there houses or something that it would be more beneficial for it to look better to the houses? Understand what I'm asking?
The only adjacent residential is Mr., and it's, it's a residence, not residential, because residential is defined not to include agricultural districts, but there is a residence, and that's where we added the buffer. But we kept the natural buffer there. So the other adjacencies do not have residences.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, Chris, um, any other questions?
No, sir.
No?
Mr. Chair?
I understand there's nobody there to raise concerns or object, so, uh...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I have one quick question. Is there something in this package, you know, is there something in this package, or is there something that shows what the limits of the C2 and what the limits of the I1 are? I can probably go back and deduce that from the land use amendment, but I didn't see anything in the package. The property's gonna be C2, and this portion's gonna be I1.
You know the answer to that, Barbara?
I do not. My client probably remembers the dimensions. Larry Guilford is on WebEx here. He can probably tell you how, how many feet back, uh, the, um, C2 goes before the I1 picks up.
All right, Larry, are you there?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, uh, you wanna, do I have to swear in, or?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's WebEx.
Do you affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, so hope you got?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
The original acreage, I believe, was 14 acres across the front, and it was a depth of approximately 450 feet, and there were two separate legal descriptions given to the county at that particular time. So the frontage, the front 450, frontage, uh, to a depth of 450, would be across the whole frontage, which is about 1,320 feet, quarter-mile across the front on Blanton Road. Rest of it would be the I1, and as you can see, the property goes up, and some of the acreage is, uh, is in, you know, in natural. It'll be kept that way. So, um, but, and then, and actually, it's probably, and then we're also giving up some frontage, uh, some additional property for right-of-way, so it's, we lose that of the 14 acres. It's probably gonna be more like 13, so.
Okay, very good.
Okay, sure.
Thanks for the clarification.
No problem.
All right, thank you, Larry.
Thank you, Larry.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, any other questions? If not, we hear our motion.
This is Michael Cox. I'll move for approval.
Thank you, Michael. Do we have a second?
Jamie Gerardi, I'll second.
All right, we have a motion, a second. Okay, any further discussion of the motion? If not, all in favor by roll call. Signify by saying aye. Close, negative.
Jamie Gerardi?
Aye.
Michael Cox?
Aye.
Peter Hanson? Roberto Saez?
Aye.
Christopher Poole? Chris Williams? Chairman Charles Gray?
Aye.
Okay.
So the following item, item P4, will be presented by Amy Hyler. Good afternoon, Amy Hyler with Planning and Development. Um, the matter that you see here is gonna be CPAL 2010 in the name of Two Rivers, uh, PDD 210097. It's gonna be a comprehensive plan text amendment to the existing subarea, as well as a proposed map amendment to the Highway Vision Plan map. The proposed amendment is going to amend the existing subarea policy, seven, uh, subarea policy flu 7.1.11 Two Rivers, and the Highway Vision Plan map 7-36, to update the subarea policies to better reflect today's development environment, as well as clean up redundant language. Some of those modifications are to include a, a land use equivalency matrix, um, while maintaining the, uh, employment generating uses that are existing, provisions for mixed use development, as well as its location, update transit provisions and protections on environment impacts and regulations. The location is gonna be along State Road 56, east of Morris Ridge Road, or Morris Bridge Road, and west of Gull Boulevard, and as, as a resolution to their proposal, we are recommending to provide a text amendment, as well as a map amendment to, uh, 7-36. The comprehensive plan, uh, the proposal is consistent with the existing policy flu 7-1, um, or 7.1.11 Two Rivers, as well as the South Market area. The property is located, this is gonna be your visual, uh, in the South Market area, as well as the Urban Services area. And it's located east, as you see, um, of Morris Ridge Boulevard and west of Gull Ridge, uh, with State Road 56 bisecting. The property is also consisting of approximately 3,405 acres. The existing zoning is gonna be AC agricultural and AR agricultural residential. The applicant is submitting an accompanying MPUD master plan, um, once the comprehensive plan is adopted. This is what your existing future land use looks like. Um, it is currently PD with CON going through the center. Uh, the existing PD has the subarea policy flu 7, 7.1.11 Two Rivers. So the reason why we are providing, um, visuals, what we're about to go into now, of the transportation network, is there are some, um, recommendations that staff would like to provide, that the applicant and staff aren't in agreeance in. So the, I'll show you the applicant's proposal, I'll show you staff's proposal, and then, um, our recommendation to move to the board. So what you see there previously was the existing network, um, and then we'll go to the next one, sorry. And that, what the applicant is proposing is basically reclassifying linear, uh, linear road to a residential, removing Old Woods Avenue connector, and then removing the county line road. So the applicant's proposal to remove those segments, um, is because with the removal of county line road, um, they, the property owner owns the development to the south, which is in Hillsborough County, and what they're proposing is to reconnect county line road through that property of Hillsborough County. Um, so in the end of the presentation, I'll show you their master plan, which identifies that. Uh, the removal of Old Woods Avenue, um, they're stating that they're showing an alignment on, that is consistent with the vision roadmap on their master plan. However, they would like to request a removal of the segment, um, for Indian, Indian Creek system, um, to avoid unnecessary environmental impacts, and then the removal of linear road... And then, the removal of linear road, the applicant is proposing, um, to provide this road as depicted on their master plan. However, they would like to reclassify it from, um, a county collector. So, I do have, um, teams or representation from our transportation team, if you have any questions with regards to that, but I'll provide you their comments on why, um, if you go to the next one. Um, so that's gonna be the final visual of what the applicant is proposing. And we'll go to the next. So, staff's recommendation, they are in support of removing County Line Road, um, as previously stated, because they're just relocating it on the other side of the, the county boundary. However, um, they are not in support of removing Old Woods Avenue, nor, um, removing linear or reclassifying that as a residential. And the reasons staff state is they're not in support of, um, eliminating the Old Woods connection, because this connection will help that, the network connectivity, and avoid the intersection failures at major roadways, as well as, um, linear road reclassification. It is considered a, uh, north-south connection from County Line Road all the way to State Road 54. If it gets eliminated, there will not be any other north-south road for two miles. And per the Land Development Code, there is a one-mile spacing recommendation for collector roadways. So, that is their justification, or our justification. And if you go to the next, uh, oh, I didn't put that in there. It might be hidden. Um, I did provide, and it is in your packet as well, um, the master plan that they're proposing, so you can see the visual of where those road networks would be. But with that, um, what we're requesting is that the, um, to the board, we're, we're seeking an alternative motion. And it looks like that one is the wrong slide, so I'll read them off to you. Um, so what we're seeking in this is an alternative motion to the board. Um, we do find the text amendment consistent, however, the map amendment, um, we're asking either to approve the applicant's proposal to amend the Highway Vision Plan and Functional Classification Map 7-36, approve the proposed amendment to the Highway Vision Plan and Functional Classification Map according to the recommendation of the Planning and Development Department, deny the proposed amendment, or direct PDD to take any other action. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. So, can you put the map back up, please? So, on the removal of County Line Road, I understand that that's premised on a similar road being located in Hillsborough County. I guess my question is, what happens if Hillsborough County doesn't approve the road? I mean, we have no control over Hillsborough County. So, I'm a little concerned with removing road. If staff thinks that road is needed based on assumption that another county's going to provide it, or allow for it, when we don't control that county. So, what, how is staff dealing with that issue?
Um, we have, uh, agreed with the applicant, and Clark is here to speak more to that if necessary, that the, uh, MPUD will recognize and provide, um, that connection and that, um, segment if necessary, if it's not going, or if something ends up happening in Hillsborough County that it does not get constructed, then yes, the applicant has agreed to, um, provide that connection if necessary.
Can I ask a quick question on that?
Yep.
Let's say that this is approved, and what you just said is correct. What about eight, nine, 10 years down the road, that they remove the road that Hillsborough County said that we will maintain, and they say, "Well, we no longer wish to do that"?
Sure. Currently, it's gonna, the proposal is to provide it in a condition of the master, the MPUD that's gonna accompany this. So, it will be addressed in the conditions of approval for that, if necessary.
So, Amy, I guess my question, though, is why didn't we show it on the vision map as, leave it on the vision, but just put a note that may be removed if parallel road provided in Hillsborough? I mean, my concern with just removing it is, if the road isn't provided in Hillsborough, then it's effectively disappeared. I mean, I don't know what our basis would be to require the right-of-way in Pasco if the road is gone. I mean, it seems better to put it, instead of eliminating it, just add a note on the vision map saying, "May be removed if, if alternate roadway provided in Hillsborough."
Right, and if that was, if that's how we would like to proceed, we can proceed with that, too. And I could give the applicant a moment to, um, address that, too, if necessary.
Yeah, that sounds like a good idea, David.
Okay.
Can I ask a question, too?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, it's Joel, too. Could I address that for the applicant briefly?
Uh, yeah, go ahead. Go ahead.
Yeah, David, per our, I know what we discussed previously was conditioning it in the MPUD, and that we would reserve that right-of-way in the MPUD as a backstop, which Clark and I had agreed with you. But unless Clark disagrees, I don't have any objection with your proposal, as long as the footnote is clear. Uh, what we were concerned about is obviously, we can't have the MPUD deemed inconsistent with the vision, uh, the Highway Vision Plan. So, I think as long as it's appropriately noted, that it's not applicable if the connection's made in Hillsborough, then I think we can work with, uh, Brad Tippin and condition it appropriately in the MPUD. Uh, Clark, is that acceptable to you?
This is Clark Hobbie. Yes, Joel, that, that's acceptable to us. And, Mr. Chairman, if, I don't know if Amy's done with her side, but it'd probably be advisable for at least Joel and I, and maybe, uh, a couple of other of our staff members to be sworn in before we get going in earnest.
Yeah, that's a great idea. Is there any other questions for Amy? I guess not, Amy. So, thank you very much. We may have more questions for you after. Okay. All right, Clark, uh, let's get you sworn in.
All right, if you raise your right hand, and do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, so hope you got?
I do.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, again, this is Clark Hobbie, Hobbie in Hobbie, PA, 109 North Breast Street, Tampa, Florida. As you just heard, I have been sworn, and I'm here on behalf of the applicant. And Joel, too, and I are serving as co-counsel on this matter. And, uh, we have also, uh, available via phone, Clark Lowmiller from Ardura, formerly King and Associates, who's been the project planner on this, uh, project for a number of years, actually probably in excess of 10 years. Cynthia Spidey, who's worked on this for a long time as well, who's now at Sterns Weaver. And Steve Henry is our transportation consultant. And we are here working on behalf of Eisenhower Property Group, which is, uh, going to have an affiliate that's the master developer of the project. So, we asked for a little bit of extra time today, cause I wanted to bring the Planning Commission up to speed on this project as a whole, and then we can talk about some of the details on the Highway Vision Map thing. But before I, I forget one thing that's important there. In staff's presentation, I believe they were still showing the Old Woods connection. And I believe subsequent to Amy's staff report being done, we received an email that the MPO representatives were, uh, now in agreement with our recommendation to remove all the segment of Oldswood that runs across Indian Creek. We were advised of that via email. So, maybe while I'm speaking and our team is presenting that, Amy can be confirming that. Uh, and, um, and then we'll, we'll discuss this matter, uh, further after our presentation. So, for your benefit, um, and I would ask Denise, if she can put up our MPUD master plan now, we can, uh, start walking you all through the project and explain to you this exciting deal.
Okay, if you give me a minute, I'll do that. Just a moment.
Okay. While she's, while she's pulling it up, I'll give you all a bit of background. This is a large piece of property. It's about 3,500 acres that, uh, lies, uh, between, uh, US 301 and Morse Bridge Boulevard, Morse Bridge Road, where the State Road 56 extension runs. And the project has been a big part of the county's planning of the urban service area and various projects related to transit over the last decade or so. Uh, and it's really kind of the anchor of the eastern end of the urban service area, given that it runs all the way to US 301. Um, the project already has entitlements, um, that are set out in the existing subarea policies. It's already a PD, future land use project, and it's had a couple of starts and stops already, uh, since like the mid 2000s. So, a lot of planning work's already gone into it, and the project now, with the, the 56 extension being completed, uh, is really ready to take off, and we've got a great developer, um, team that's going to be running it. And I feel like it's gonna be a great project for the county in general. Um, you can see the master plan that's, uh, there, and if you can blow it up a little bit, Denise, thank you. So, you can see State Road 56 running through the north, uh, third of the site. It's important that everyone on Planning Commission understand that, uh, State Road 56 was built, uh, the extension of it, over six miles, I believe, uh, was built through this project and two others on the, and, and getting the third and fourth lanes built together with the first two on the basis of a loan that the county got from the State Infrastructure Bank, which is a affiliate of DOT, in reliance on, uh, mobility fee surcharges that are imposed on development within these three projects, of which Two Rivers is the largest. So, basically, the county and the applicant owner worked together with two other large projects to make 56 happen all at once. So, it's been a collaborative deal for a number of years, and the county needs those mobility fee surcharges to, uh, pay back the State Infrastructure, uh, Bank loan that the county took out. So, um, like I said, having, keeping that in mind, there are a series of other plans that the county's undertaken, uh, as part of the development of the urban service area, and it included this property within it, all based on this project coming to fruition. It's a good mixed-use project. There are commitments that are going to be maintained throughout the project for employment generating uses, um, which are probably going to be developed in the pink areas that you're seeing by 56 and 301, and Morris Bridge and 56. So, um, there's a lot of good things that are going on here, but I don't want to spoil too much of it, cause I'm gonna ask Clark Lowmiller with Ardura to walk you through the project in general, since Clark's been working on this for so long. Clark, if you would.
Thanks, Clark. Um, I haven't been sworn in officially, so I probably should do that first.
Raise your right hand, then.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, so hope you got?
Did you hear that?
Yep, I do.
All right, thank you.
All right. If you can pull the MPD back up, that'd be great. Thank you. Uh, good afternoon. Uh, Clark Lowmiller, as Clark Hobbie mentioned, I'm with Ardura, formerly King Engineering and Associates, at 4921 Memorial Highway, Suite 300, Tampa, Florida, 33634. I have been working on this project on, off and on for, uh, at least 10 years now. Uh, and it's changed hands multiple times. We've looked at it, multiple developers, and this is the first one that's really come with a plan that, that wants to incorporate walkability, wants to look at the, the community first, and, and the county first with regard to school locations, and the, and the park location first and foremost. Um, and then also look at kind of the internal connectivity, walkability, amenities. So, let me first start out by saying, we, we started a program in, um, the school and park sites first. We wanted to accommodate a large facility, high school, middle school, elementary school, co-located with the county park, uh, which we've coordinated already with both groups, and they started looking at the viability of that as an option. Uh, this, this park areas, uh, we've, we've coordinated with Keith Wiley, and some of the cool features of that will be a couple recreational complexes, seven multipurpose fields, 12 diamonds, and aquatic center, some playgrounds, dog park, tennis courts, basketball courts, uh, and some other open space elements to really amenitize that portion, or really this portion of the county, and really co-locate that with the school facility that I know Chris is familiar with. So, really excited about that. I know it's something that really comes in further on down the road, but we really feel like we wanted to, uh, account for that first in, in the master planning. We've also taken the opportunity to push some of the commercial job creation to the, the further nodes, uh, to create opportunity for accessibility for the surrounding neighborhoods, uh, surrounding rooftops, residents there that may want, may come here to shop, work, to get their groceries, uh, so it's easy access there. And then really focus internally in the yellow areas that you'll see, and created a large boulevard loop system, really trying to avoid some of the major wetland features, the natural features, uh, specifically Indian Creek, which then, um, connects down into Hillsborough River, uh, Class 1 water body. Uh, so, it, it was really important to us to, to try to work our way around that and not impact that at all. Um, but the, the loop in the middle, uh, is the vision plan and the, the connectivity down to the Hillsborough piece, which is one of the main purposes of relocating County Line Road down to the Hillsborough, what, what it's called actually in zone, called, uh, Two Rivers Preserve. That connection is already approved on the MPUD down there, across Indian Creek about, uh, you see the Tico right-of-way there, the easement, so it's probably about 1,000 feet south of where the County Line Road would be on Pasco. So, just felt it was an unnecessary crossing there, which is already approved in Hillsborough. So, the loop internal, uh, just on the Pasco property is about three miles, and it will be a boulevard, multipurpose trail, uh, really having some stops and nodes. There's one showing on there right now in the pink area, just north of Wetland, as a mixed-use parcel, and there's gonna be multiple other ones along there that will support neighborhood, retail, uh, restaurants, other commercial opportunities, coffee shops, things like that to really engage the community. When you complete the loop with the southern piece of the property, it's about six and a half miles. So, we're hoping this allows for alternative vehicle opportunities to access the mixed-use areas, the amenities, allow for the opportunity to have, you know, 5Ks, 10Ks, marathons, fun runs, even some farmers' markets and festivals along that loop, to really create a linear pathway and engagement internal to the property, so that folks that live there don't have to, you know, go up to Chancy, get out on, on, uh, Morse Bridge Road and 301, but really stay internal to their community. Our overall goal in master planning this so far has really been to create a community that allows the residents to, really, not to be cliche, but really to live, work, and play here. And I think with the co-location of the school park facility allows that. With the location, this is in the larger, uh, big box opportunities, job creation on the perimeter, and then really keeping all the neighborhood support stuff internal, it allows that opportunity, so they don't have to get in their vehicles and drive out of the neighborhood. They can really stay in there and go buy golf carts to get all their day-to-day goods. Um, so, with that, we're really excited about it, um, and look forward to your support. And I'll turn it back over to Joel, or Clark.
I'll, I'll, I'll take, I'll take over here in a minute. And just a few minutes, I, I can tell that, I think we've had a little bit of misunderstanding with staff on this old, Old Woods issue. And we received some communications in, I think, November from staff saying that they supported removing that, and I'm gonna have Steve Henry address it. But let, let me talk about, uh, the changing of the, uh, Lanier road that is on our site, and the reasons why we think that's merited. Uh, and I would ask Denise, if you could throw up the, uh, overall Lanier exhibit I sent you that shows you, uh, where it runs north of the site and its general condition. While she's doing that, so, as Clark Lowmiller said, we have no objection to building warranted and needed vision roads on the site. Um, we're building about 6.7 miles of collector roads within the site. So, we don't have any objection to that, and where they're needed, warranted, and, and will make a functional difference, we have no problem with it. Lanier Road, this is, if you see the green line towards the bottom and then running up towards 54, that's Lanier Road directly off of our site. And there are about 75 to 100 homes, uh, that directly access Lanier Road. It's a very small right-of-way, and I believe the right-of-way originally starts from the Zephyr Land Colony. Land Colony Platte and it's only 30 feet wide, but it's a loaded. Street with very little right of way there. And it runs up to 54 hypothetically, but there's also about a half mile break in the middle. Where there might may not be any right of way and the county doesn't even maintain it. And if and if Denise, if you would pop up a picture or two that I sent you on that. I think now this is one of the examples you can see, she'll put it back up in a sec. You can see it's a very, very narrow right of way and it's not publicly maintained and the picture you could see on the left, there's actually a sign. Where the residents are saying, we need you guys to chip in to help maintain this road because it's not being maintained by the county at all. Because of the way that road exists, it will never be able to function as an unloaded collector road in the sense that highway vision. Collector arterial does because there are already so many. Houses and units that directly needed for access. They have no other roads that provide access. To those units. So even if the road is widened, it will still have units running on it. In the way that we are proposing by making it a local street on our side and to make it very clear. We have no objection whatsoever to making a connection from 56 up to where Lanier is. We will have a street there and we're showing that on our MPUD. The only objection we have is making an unloaded collector road in that section because it's just not going to be functional. The county would have to take a lot of right of way on the area north of us and it will still be loaded in any event. So again, client has no objection to to making the connection there. And our study and the county show that there's very, very little traffic. That will run in that segment and it just does not merit us building an additional $2, $3 million unloaded collector road. So that's why we're asking for that to be removed. And I do have Steve Henry here. He can answer any of the technical questions. On that, but with regard to Old Woods, again, kind of a little bit blindsided here. We had been advised that staff supported removing Old Woods. I'll tell you what I know about it. Which is the highway vision map. For Old Woods connection over east of Indian Creek requires another crossing of Indian Creek, which we don't think is permissible. Because it's a Class 1 water body that up to now has had. Federal jurisdiction through the Corps. Maybe that ends up at DEP, but it's still going to be subject to waters of the United States. Because that's a headwater of the Hillsborough River. And furthermore, our studies and the county studies showed that this one segment that you can see the arrow on for Old Woods carries very, very little traffic. And I think the the stuff I got from Steve Henry shows that it's only carrying like 3,000 daily trips, which is very low. And would require a very expensive bridge to cross Indian Creek, which again, that we think is going to be very expensive or not formidable at all. From my perspective, those are the only changes, the only differentiations we have from staff on its recommendations. And Steve, I, you know, if you can get on and explain any of the technical side on Old Woods or Lanier that I've missed, that would be great.
Yeah, I'm on Steve Henry, Lynxen Associates, 5023 West Laurel, Tampa 33607, and I have been sworn. We did look at the the county's build out model and talking about Lanier and that segment of Lanier from. 56 Chancy has got about 1,300 cars per day. So doesn't justify even the build out of the county, doesn't justify a collector roadway. Certainly, we're providing the connection that will have the the ability to go from 56 up to 54. It just doesn't, in our view, doesn't need to be a collector road. Certainly need the the connectivity, but not necessarily a collector road. And from Oldwood, I think that as Clark had indicated, the volume is a little over 3,000 cars per day, which doesn't justify the. Enormous cost of a bridge of crossing the Indian Creek that that would require. So from our standpoint, we don't see the benefit. In the the volumes on both of those roads to build the collector roadways. Oldwood at all because of the whether it's even permissible and the cost of a bridge to go over there for 3,000 cars per day.
So Mr. Chairman, just I want a couple of things that I might also clarify. We have a pending MPUD and. The issue that David raised about the connection with the property in Hillsborough County, I would reiterate. We will agree to conditions and it's the same landowner that owns the Hillsborough side of the property and this side of the property. And we know we're going to have a development agreement or highly likely will have a development agreement that will be reported. And we have no problem working out conditions or development agreement terms and conditions that will lock this in. Which is different than the other problems we've had with the city of Tampa and or Hillsborough County. And Pasco County where we have interconnecting roadways. So we know we're confident we can lock in. The conditions and one of those mechanisms to protect Pasco County so that there is. The system that's already approved and the Thomas Family's PD. In Hillsborough County to ensure that it's built when we need it to make a connection to Pasco. For both counties' benefits. So we have no problem there. And I think that generally covers most of our concerns. I I will say this. It sounds to me like there's been a little bit of miscommunication. With staff and it's probably COVID related. Everybody's working remotely. And we have no problem continuing to work with Amir Essen and David as we move forward to. Meeting our upcoming hearing on the transmittal of the plan amendment. But from where we we sit, and again, we're happy to meet with staff again, we've had several meetings. But David hasn't been in all of them and it sounds like there's maybe a little bit of communication internally. With the county staff, but from where we sit, we want to advance the project. And even if we were to add these back at the time of the actual adoption. There shouldn't be any problem removing them now because we can always deal with these as we're dealing with the MPUD or at the time of the adoption. Of the plan amendment, dealing with this some months from now. Joel, did you have anything further that you wanted to throw in there?
Yeah, I only have one or two very brief points. If Denise would be kind enough to put our MPUD plan back up. Thanks Denise. On on the first point on Lanier, the extension of Lanier. Which we are more than happy to include as a required internal subdivision road, just not at collector status. I'd like to point out in response to the Transportation Department point about spacing. It's not as if we're not going to have any north-south roads on the north side of. State Road 56 between Morse Bridge and 301. If you look at the plan, we're going to have three different roads. The two, one being Lanier, one being the sandy. Drive or sandy road connection and the third being Coats Road and Coats may end up being four lanes because of its. Proximity to the co-located school and park complex and the employment center. So between Morse Bridge and 301, even with the applicant's proposal, you're going to have three different. Connection points north-south. I will venture that. Even though we don't have any of these residents to the north of Lanier. Here in our hearing today, that if they are told. That the county is requiring a through collector regional roadway going north through their homes. That there will be massive, massive outcry from those adjacent residents. We're happy to provide the connection so they can come down to 56 to assist them getting out. But we don't want to create the appearance that we're going to funnel a whole bunch of our new project traffic. Through their front yards. I just don't think that's smart planning and it's certainly not politically. Intelligent to do that. So so in our position is we're going to provide plenty of north-south connectivity that will be functional. But will be less intrusive and less objectionable to those neighbors to the north.
Joel, can I ask you a question related to that?
Sure.
Is the applicant agreeing that all three of those roads would be public, non-gated roadways?
Yes, on the north side, we are happy to do that on the north side of 56.
Okay, that was my question.
Right. So we are providing three alternatives. So it is unfair to say that there will be a two-mile gap. That we don't provide an alternative north-south roadway. That's simply not actually correct. It it purely has to do with the nature and the classification of this road. And and that's all. Now, as to Oldwood. We clearly understood staff had in writing agreed to eliminate this. Theoretical connection across Indian Creek. But what I want to point out is if you scroll down. We're not, we're not limiting, we're not eliminating. The Oldwood connection to 301. As you see, we are intentionally looping it as Clark Lowmiller indicated to make that a main. Four-lane boulevard that comes through and connects directly through the previously approved Hillsborough County connection to 301. So our point is we are providing the exact functional equivalent. At Oldwood, Morse Bridge to 301. We are doing that, yet we're doing it in an intelligent way. And not breaching yet again, the tributary system that whether it's the Army Corps or or FDET. The environmental permit folks are not going to be happy with that. We know what happened at Ridge Road and we don't need to pick a fight. That takes years and years to win. So this is the functional equivalent and there is absolutely no logical reason, in my opinion. Why you should force a connection through here. It is incumbent upon us, if you agree to this network, it is incumbent upon us and our timing and phasing study in the MPUD. Steve Henry to demonstrate that this network still will work without that connection. We already know that to be the case. Because he's already done that much work. So we will make it work. And then my final comment is, as I agreed with David. We're happy if it's better for the county and more palatable to staff, we're happy to show for now this vision road alignment. My suggestion is we make that county road alignment. Right along the southern boundary so it doesn't intrude more on our development site planning than necessary. Let's show it right along this southern boundary with a footnote. That says that if this alternative road in Hillsborough County gets built. Then we don't have to construct this one and we only reserve that right of way along our boundary in the MPUD. Until such time as the other roadway is constructed. So those are my comments on the three items. I don't think there's any dispute about County Line Road if that works for David and staff. And I just don't logically see the debate over an additional, it's really an additional Oldwood connection beyond the one that we're making. And it makes no sense from the environmental or the traffic standpoint. That's all I had. Thank you.
Okay, and Joel and David. Are we in agreement? Are you in agreement in terms of what the county might agree to for the County Line Road section?
So yes, I agree with Joel's proposal and just for Clark's benefit. It's not that I don't dislike their network in Hillsborough County or have any problem with it, it's just that. Hillsborough County's been known to threaten us when they don't, you don't give them something they want on a different road. And so if for some reason they try to hold us hostage and not not allow construction of the. Network to the south, I don't want us to be stuck without any east-west road.
Understood, and I think we're in agreement on the Hillsborough side, David, and I know we had one call where we discussed it. What you're talking about and we don't have an objection to us. I think we're fine there. It's really just. It's Lanier and then, like I said, feel a little bit blindsided on this Old Woods thing. I. We, our transportation folks met with the county and we thought that we had an understanding. Couple of months ago. So all I can say is we disagree about the importance of the road and the justification. For crossing Indian Creek again and we'll be happy to discuss it again with staff after today's hearing regardless.
David, would you, are you proposing that there'd be some kind of timetable or?
No, I'm proposing exactly what Joel said, which is the. The 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 road, County Line Roads to remain on the vision map where they know that it may be removed. When the network in Hillsborough, the parallel network in Hillsborough County is constructed. Or that it does need to be constructed. So. We can work on the exact language. I'm just, my main issue is if for some reason Hillsborough. Didn't build that road. I need to make sure that the road is still on the vision map so that we can reserve the right of way forward. From this project. I realize that it probably will get built. I'm not saying it won't. But. We've had issues with Hillsborough in the past and I don't want. Holding us hostage. That's my only concern.
Okay. And it seems reasonable to me that that we do have three access points. So that should be adequate, especially since it don't go anywhere.
Mr. Chairman, if you think about it, we actually have five because the project abuts 301 and Morse Bridge Road. So we're showing three other internal ones.
Right. So anyway, any comments from the DAS, anybody on the board, any questions?
If someone's speaking, we can't hear them.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I still have a problem with County Line Road. I know what Attorney Pierce said. But it kind of reminds me of what's going on over in Meadow Point with them trying to connect a road between. The county of Hillsborough and Pasco County with a couple hundred feet, I believe that road is. It's an east-west road. I think east-west roads are very important. In fact, I just drove this area just this past weekend. And I understand the necessity for. Homes go out there. In fact, there are a number of homes already in development out there and. The the traffic is of. Of 56 is is going to significantly increase within the next, I would say, eight years or less. Because of the development going on out there presently between 301 and. Along 56. That's my concern. I just want to put that out there that I really have a concern about east-west roads.
Alright, thank you.
We we agree. That's that's why we're in agreement with staff on this.
Any anybody else have any questions? Anybody that need board members on the WebEx that have questions? Okay, well, if not, I don't think we have anybody else to speak. From the podium, do we Denise?
I believe we have Amir Jamali from the county, if there's any questions for him and clarification on what the county has agreed on.
Okay.
Well.
We know and we can call him forward. Do we have any questions for Amir?
Yes, that's all right. I'm sorry. I just want a clarification as to. County's position on Old Woods Avenue across the creek there.
Amir.
Hello, everyone. This is Amir Jamali, Transportation Planner with Planning and Development Department. On Oldwood connection, our position is not to agree to remove this connection because. If we remove this connection, we lose the only connect, the east-west corridor connection we have. If this connection gets eliminated, then local drivers have to get to SR 56 and US 31 for their short trips. Which are arterial roadways and high-speed roadways, which is not a safe alternative for local drivers. If we have this roadway, then people, they can easily use this connection for their short trip and to get to their local destinations. And I'm not sure, Mr. Hobbie claimed that MPUD staff have agreed to remove this connection. I'm not sure. Have they contacted with MPUD staff or not?
Um, um, this is Clark Hobbie and I'm sorry, Amir, I was really referring to you. I I. I wasn't present, but I received. Communication from Steve Henry after he met with you and I, it was my understanding and Steve's understanding that you were okay with eliminating. I would say this for your benefit and for the Planning Commission's benefit. The other connection is clearly shown on the site through the northern Hillsborough. Portion in our loop road system. That's all going to be built with the same property owner with assurances. From the landowner that will probably be recorded for the county. So there is a second connection. The problem we have is if you start adding all these other ones, you're asking us to make. The problem we have is if you start adding all these other ones, you're asking us to make two, three, four crossings of the headwaters of the Hillsborough River, and I don't think it's permissible, having worked in this area for a long time. And I do think the current system that Ardua's laid out and been planning around for years will give us the same functional connections we need to 301, to Morris Bridge, and all the way up through the, the system to the north.
Yeah, as I said, the problem is the local trips have to go to the major roadways. You don't like, you don't like the people go to the major intersections resulting in the failure and the congestion at the intersection. Then the county has to pay for the improvements at the intersection. At that time.
I, I would respectfully say we're making, we're not putting the trips on 56 where there's a way to get to 301 for them to access the remainder of the area that's being, would be developed on the southwest quadrant of 301. So that's where the trips would go. I understand if we built 15 streets across the river, we could avoid all of the arterials and collectors, but at some point you have to be practical.
Yeah, another problem is when we remove the roadway, we are not just talking about the vehicles. We are also talking about the pedestrians and bicycles. If we remove the roadways, then we, obviously we don't have any sidewalk or any bike lane for people to commute, commute between these neighboring communities. So my concern is not only about the private vehicles.
I, I would say this, those level of issues will be addressed in the MPUD, and we have a great trails plan that Ardua's been working on that shows a lot of connectivity throughout the site. You probably haven't seen that yet because it hasn't been relevant, but I know we can solve these issues in the MPUD. But I really don't think that has anything to do with the collector arterial system. We're going to make great connections and have a great trail plan that will serve the entirety of this community regardless of the highway vision map. The highway vision map is not what drives that issue.
And can I add something about the linear roadway? Maybe Mr. Henry is right about the capacity and the traffic volumes. These roadways don't carry so much traffic volumes, but we cannot expect all of the roadway perform at their maximum capacity. Morris Bridge is gonna be filled or congested. The Viewers Sea at Hillstock here is gonna be more than one for Morris Bridge. So we need some relief. If something happens, if some crash happens on Morris Bridge, then we need some relief and some alternative for the drivers. If we remove linear road from the vision roadway, so obviously the network is gonna be congested. If you are saying that we are gonna replace it with a local road, we know that we cannot replace a collector road with a local road. They are designed for different purposes. Collectors and arterials are designed for providing mobility, not accessibility. Local roads are designed for providing the access to the properties. That's why we have, that's why the collectors and arterials are designed for high-speed roadways, and we have restricted driveway spacing on such roadways. So to me, it doesn't make sense to replace a collector road with a local road.
Steve, I don't, do you want to respond to that? Again, I think we've made our point clear. And I would say this also to Planning Commission. Just remember, we're trying to build with some of these communities something that's more of an urban design that's going to have less of a traditional Brandon-type suburban feel. The more unloaded collector and arterial roads you put through neighborhoods like that, the less of a community you're going to make, because you're bifurcating these areas north of 56 into very small areas where people won't feel safe walking across there. And that's not in, it's not in concert with what we're trying to do in the urban service area. Steve, I, I would ask that you just respond to any technical sides about it, but I, I feel confident we're making the connections, and we will distribute the number of trips that are needed for these streets.
Right. I mean, I think we're, we're doing two things, three things. One is, obviously, we're providing addition. We have three connections between Morris Bridge and 301 with the three roads that we're showing on the, on the concept plan that we've got here. As far as Lanier, the, the real issue becomes is that the likelihood of it ever becoming a collector road north of our, our project is slim to none because as you had indicated, that there's 75 to 100 homes that currently front on that road, and the county buying those is virtually impossible. And so the reality is it needs to be a road that functions the same from 54 to 56, which is a collector road that does provide parallel capacity to Morris Bridge. Does it provide the same as a collector? No, but at the same time, the volumes don't warrant that collector. So I think we're doing the same thing. I, I get the point of, of the collector road, but in this instance, because of the current land uses that are out there, the likelihood of it being able to buy all those homes and develop it as a collector roadway is slim. And so we're providing the same type of facility that will be there north of our project to 54, south to 56. In addition, we're providing an additional north-south connection that will, in, in addition, help Morris Bridge Road by providing that additional connection to the north. So from that standpoint, I think we are providing that. It's just in a different format than maybe the, the vision road, but I think it's serving the same purpose, given the constraints that you've got on, on Lanier.
Mr. Chair, can I ask Amir and/or Steve a question?
Sure.
When you talked about the VC ratio on Mor, on Morris Bridge Road, was that in its existing two-lane configuration, or did you assume it would be widened to what's shown on the, either four, I guess probably at least four lanes?
No, David, I was talking about the build-out, and I was assuming four lanes. Four lanes, the Viewers Sea is gonna be about 1.05, something like that.
Okay.
So it, it's, so at four lanes, it is generally at capacity. I mean, obviously, none of us are that accurate at build-out volume. These are, these are build-out volumes. This is assuming that the entire county builds out at the maximum intensity of the land use. So at, at build-out, at maximum capacity, we're talking about a 1.05. So again, I, I think that we're providing that parallel capacity, but given that, that what the level of service of the VC will be for Morris Bridge at build-out of the county, I think we've got a reasonable solution here, given the constraints of Lanier.
Mr. Chairman, it's Joel too. May I interject one brief point?
Sure. Here, go ahead.
Yes, sir. We're being asked to build a collector road to nowhere. That's the simple fact. That road is going to go nowhere north of there. If someone thinks it's going north as a regional collector, that person needs to go knock on the doors of those residences up there and explain to them why that's so, and deal with that issue. Making that a collector, as Clark pointed out, also is contrary to other planning principles. We all know that there are common conflicts between long-range transportation department desires and actual land use planning. And let me give an example. Mr. Williams has already expressed a desire that we do as much as we can to create pedestrian safety for students to walk to these schools, particularly the elementary schools. And the more of these collector dividers we have, the more unsafe that becomes. With our plan, we can have everyone here on the north side of 56 get around that wetland with a pedestrian walkway into that school system and the park without people having to drive on 56 and without kids being run over. Similarly, on the south side, we're going to figure out a way to move that pedestrian movement so that there is at most one primary designated safety crossing to figure out how to get across 56. So my point is, it's not just all about transportation. It's also about the real world. It's about the school concerns. It's about the safety of these kids and these young families. And at some point, we have to get out of the ivory tower and build in realism. And I just, I'm having difficulty seeing the logic behind compelling a regional collector for this short segment when we need to spend that money on child safety in schools and park facilities. Thank you.
All right. David, anything else from you?
No, my only, the only thing is I think you probably should make a motion on these roadways one at a time, so we're clear from the clerk what your recommendation is. So you can handle, I just handle county line, Oldwood, and Lanier separately, so that there may be a separate recommendation on each roadway.
Okay, let's, uh, let's start the county line road connection.
What would be the wording?
Well, I think it was what Joel stated, which is that, that the road would remain on the vision map with a note that it can be removed when the parallel roadway network in Hillsborough County is constructed. So Joel and I can work on the language of the note, but that's effectively the motion for being.
I would make that motion.
Okay, good. Do we have a second?
Jamie, Jamie Girardi, I'll second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion of that motion? All in favor, by roll call? Vote same way.
Jamie Girardi.
Hi.
Michael Cox.
Hi.
Peter Hansel. Roberto Saez.
Roberto.
Christopher Poole. Chris Williams. Chairman Charles Gray.
Hi. Okay, now, could we have a motion on Lanier?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
I'm going to move that we recommend approval of the proposed amendment of the applicant's proposal.
Okay, so we recommend the applicant's vision of Lanier. And do we have a second on that motion?
I'll second it.
I'll second it.
We have a motion in a second? Any further discussion of that motion? All in favor of that motion, signify by roll call?
Jamie Girardi.
Hi.
Michael Cox.
Hi.
Peter Hansel. Roberto Saez.
Hi.
Christopher Poole. Chris Williams. Chairman Charles Gray.
Hi. And lastly, a motion on Oldwoods.
Mr. Chairman, it's Michael Cox. I'll, I'll move that we recommend to the BCC the proposed amendment based on the applicant's recommendation.
Okay, so we're going. Recommendation, do we have a second?
Jamie Girardi, I'll second.
Okay, Jamie. So we, we have a motion in a second. Any, any further discussion?
Yeah, I just have, that's to delineate the Oldwoods Avenue, because what you're looking up there is staff recommendation on this one here.
Yes, where it shows Oldwoods, it was, it would eliminate that. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. So any further discussion on that? On that motion? All right, all in favor of the motion, signify by roll call?
Jamie Girardi.
Hi.
Michael Cox.
Hi.
Peter Hansel. Roberto Saez.
Hi.
Christopher Poole. Chris Williams. Chairman Charles Gray.
Hi.
Then, Mr. Chairman, I think you need a motion on the balance of the item.
Okay, now, subject to the changes that we've just made to this application, do I have a motion to approve the, the application as amended?
Jamie Girardi, so moved.
Okay, we have a motion in a second?
I second.
All in favor? By roll call?
Jamie Girardi.
Hi.
Michael Cox.
Hi.
Peter Hansel. Roberto Saez.
Hi.
Christopher Poole. Chris Williams. Chairman Charles Gray.
Hi.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Joel and I and our whole team look forward to working with you guys, and we'll be back in, in front of you with the MPUD in a few months. Again, we'll give you more details at that time, but we appreciate your time.
All right, buddy. Take care and good job.
All right, thank you. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Think it'll turn out pretty nice. I think we have one more. Do we, Denise?
We have one more item, and Amy Hyler will be presenting the item.
Okay, hello again. Amy Hyler, Planning and Development. What you'll see here is a proposed comprehensive plan amendment in the name of SEPAL 2112 Hay Road. And it is, it is PDD 210179. What their, the applicant is proposing is a future land use map amendment from map 2-15 and sheet 21 to amend the future land use from RES 6, residential six dwelling units per gross acre, and IL light industrial or industrial light to RES 24, residential 24 dwelling units per gross acre to allow for the development of 100 or 400 apartment units. The proposal is located at the intersection of Wesley Chapel Boulevard and Hay Road. And as stated, the resolution is to amend maps 2-15 and sheet 21.
Okay.
And the comprehensive plan is consistent with the following policies. Policy 1.8.8 employment center purpose. Policy 8.1.2 the South Market area, as well as policy flu 1.6.3 transitional land use. And this is a location map, made in the South Market area and urban service area. Visual for your aerial is located along Wesley Chapel Boulevard and Hay Road, approximately two miles north of State Road 52, 54. And the existing zoning is AC agricultural and I industrial. The small pink portion is going to be your I-1. The proposed development is also, or the applicant is also proposing and accompanying MPUD with this. The, the reasoning why we're going to RES 24 for 400 units is because of the restrictions of the wetlands on site. So the developable acres with the 400 units would equate to approximately 13 dwelling units per gross acre. And because the comprehensive plan does not have any future land use between a RES 12 and a RES 24, we're proposing RES 24, and the applicant will cap the development at 400 units in the MPUD.
Okay.
Sting future land use. This is just a visual. You'll see the striped area is going to be a RES 6. The light gray is IL. And then the proposed future land use would be RES 24s. And with that, this was supposed to be updated again. Since this is a proposal for apartment units or apartment complexes within the county, it is directed to seek an alternative motion, so the same as before. Either propose the, approve the proposed large-scale comprehensive plan amendment according to the Planning and Development Apartment, Department. Approve the proposed large-scale comprehensive plan amendment with modified conditions. Deny the large-scale modified, or the large-scale comprehensive plan amendment, excuse me, or direct PDD to take other action. And I'd be happy to answer any questions. Joel 2 is the representative for the applicant.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a question before the applicant speaks to Amy? I'm not sure if I, in your second alternative, is there, is there any sub area associated with this plan amendment?
No, this is just a straight future land use amendment from RES 6 to RES 24. But because it's apartments, we're just seeking the alternative action.
I, I understand that, but I'm not sure it's an adequate alternative to say with modified conditions because there are no conditions you put on a plan amendment unless you have a sub area policy, so.
Sure. No, I understand.
My point is, I think you need to modify the language of your alternative. I'm not even sure that is a viable alternative, is my point.
Yeah, I under. Update that for Transmitt.
So what's the, what's the fix, David?
The planning commission can, can recommend approval or denial. That's up to the planning commission. My point is, approving it with modified conditions is not really an option. So you would just, you would make a motion for approval or denial, whichever you want to do.
And that would include the limit to 13 units per acre?
The limit, I think, will be in the MPUD, as Amy stated. I don't think they're, they're proposing a limit in the plan amendment.
Okay. All right. So does anybody have any question? Amy?
Mr. Chairman, Michael Cox, I have a, a couple of general questions. Mainly dealing with the level of entitled multifamily apartments already in the county. entitled multifamily apartments already in the county. You know, I'm, when I look at this project, uh, I'm concerned about the traffic impact on Wesley Chapel Boulevard. And um, I've heard multiple occasions, especially after the last planning commission meeting, of the level of apartments um, that we have already in the county and the existing entitlements that are in the county. So I'd like to hear from the planning department, just general conversation about how many apartments are already entitled? And does that fulfill the potential need that the county is projecting?
I'd like to speak to that. Amy?
Um, I think as, as of now, we, I personally do not have those numbers for you, but we can get those numbers um, if necessary. And, and, you know, answer that question for you to see how much is entitled. I know we have some projects going on internally that kind of speak to that, so we could probably get you those numbers.
I know we have a cer- don't we have a certain area designated uh, which limits the construction of new apartments?
More District Two, right now, is, is where it's being.
Okay, so anything outside District Two is not within those boundaries?
Correct. And then we also have the urban service area, which promotes that level of development.
Okay, so would this request be impacted by those? Is it within those areas?
It is within District Two, but it is also within the urban service area.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, are you ready to take motions on this particular project?
Oh, well, are there any questions or concerns?
Well, the app- the applicant would like to uh, present.
Uh, yeah, Joel, ju- we'll just one second. I definitely give you your.
Yeah, I would say, uh, Chris Poole, I'd say I share Mr. Cox's concerns with the uh, with the project overall. Um, I think his comments, the staff are, are very valid regarding trying to get a more of an understanding of, of um, what the uh, what that looks like for this. So I, I share Mr. Cox's concerns there.
All right, well, so that we can get a better picture of what's really being asked here. Um, Joel, if you'd like to make your presentation and we can get maybe some questions answered?
Yes, sir, Mr. Gray, I'm happy to, and uh, thank you all for just a few moments here. And obviously, uh, the applicant and I are well aware of some political concerns about more multifamily apartments in Pasco County, and I intend to address that head on. First, let's talk about what the planning principles are, what your comprehensive plan says uh, and how this property fits into that. As we all know, uh, the county, including the planning commission and the board of county commissioners, are obligated to follow their own adopted comprehensive plan unless and until the county commission pursuant to law changes that comprehensive plan. Though, what we're dealing with here as a proper legal matter and a proper comprehensive plan matter is we have to deal with what's adopted. And this is what's adopted. Uh, this is an infill site, it's an undeveloped infill site. It is in the South Market area. The county commission long ago designated the South Market area uh, for mixed use uh, employment supporting density and actually encourages and emphasizes higher density residential in this South Market area. So that's point number one, is that this property owner, this collection of property owners and their proposed developer have actually identified an infill site that the comprehensive plan and the adopted policies of the county commission direct them to go to. So that's number one. Number two, the property already is designated rez six, which is a multifamily designation. Um, it, it, it already is recognized as appropriate for multifamily use. Part of it is industrial, uh, because it happens to be under this ownership. So it's not like we're asking to ban land or single family residential land to multifamily. It already is multifamily and it's recognized in the South Market area. Even more importantly, it is sandwiched by industrial commerce park on the entire eastern boundary. Its southern boundary is contiguous with a very large employment center designation under the comprehensive plan. So we have a large employment center on our south and employment center, as was pointed out on your first item today. It actually has a mandatory multifamily component of twenty percent. So you're going to have multifamily apartments in the parcel, the large parcel contiguous with us to the south. The comp plan also says under the employment center designation that you are to encourage higher density residential development adjacent to employment centers. So by definition, and that's the policy that Amy referred to under policy one point eight point eight, you are supposed to encourage multifamily use such as what we're proposing adjacent to this employment center. Finally, the parcel to the west was recently recommended for approval by your planning commission and approved by the county commission for multifamily, multifamily development. It has a townhome project under construction by Madamie Holmes. So you've just recommended approval for multifamily on our western boundary and your comp plan has an employment center on the eastern boundary, and we have an industrial park commerce center uh, to our east. So my question is, given this linear, narrow parcel that has multiple wetlands in it and limited developable area, what pray tell would the property owner sell their property for development as other than multifamily? So I submit that this is the poster child, according to the adopted comprehensive plan uh, and the applicable policies, it is the poster child and compels a conclusion that the plan amendment is appropriate and consistent with the comprehensive plan. Significantly, the staff, the staff, which is well aware of the political issue, the staff has professionally, independently and logically concluded with their findings of fact that everything I just told you is correct and that it is consistent with the comp plan. Now, on the, the locational item, uh, Ms. Hyler, I'm sure unintentionally, but she, she misspoke a little bit. Um, in response to your question, she said that the multifamily locational criteria that the board had a resolution recently, that that applied to District Two, that, that is not correct. Uh, the county commission very specifically in public hearings, and I attended them, they very specifically narrowed the specific corridor in which the board as a group, forgetting any one individual commissioner's prerogative, but the board as a group voted, and I believe that ultimately was unanimous vote, but they voted to define that corridor as the State Road fifty-six, fifty-four corridor, and it specifically excluded this ca- this County Road fifty-four, AKA Wesley Chapel Boulevard. It excluded that from those restrictions. So the correct factual answer to your question is that not only is this parcel in the urban service area, not only is it in the South Market area, but it is outside. It was not included by the county commission in the corridor along fifty-four, fifty-six, where the board adopted some interim locational criteria. So the legal fact is, in my opinion, and what the established board policy is, that this site is entirely appropriate uh, for multifamily development. And in fact, as an infill site based upon the, the applicable comprehensive plan policies, um, it, it, it should be approved and recommended for approval. Uh, so I urge you to do what you, or your oath to do, and that is to apply your independent judgment and planning principles and specifically to apply the comprehensive plan as it's drafted today, to apply that board resolution as it's drafted today, and not to speculate or conjure what the county commission might do in the future. I've said this before and I said it at the public hearing. If and when the county commission decides that it is prepared to ban apartments in Pasco.
Your time expired about two minutes ago, but I'm trying to be uh, generous.
Well, I'll wrap up in one sentence. If the board wants to change the policy, they need to go through the process, change their comprehensive plan, delete the Mount South Market area or modify it. But as long as it's in place, this needs to be approved.
All right, thank you very much. Appreciate that clarification. Any, uh, any questions for Mr. Two?
Mr. Chairman?
Anybody on WebEx have any questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Michael Cox. Um, yeah, can we address the traffic uh, concerns of that?
I, I can. Is that what you're asking, the applicant?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, we, uh, Mr. Cox, we were required to uh, have our transportation consultant, Steve Henry. He did that analysis with your transportation staff and they concluded as a factual and professional matter that there was no needs analysis required because the previously approved trip under our prior designation because of the industrial area actually are greater than what our trips will be with limited to four hundred multifamily units. So we, in fact, will have a decrease of the theoretical density from the prior planned categories uh, as compared to this cap with four hundred units. We still will have to go through the normal timing and phasing analysis as part of the MPUD. So you will still have, uh, and that'll come back through you guys, you're still going to have the MPUD and you're still going to have the traffic analysis. But uh, our, our study indicates that there's absolutely no problem here, there's no capacity issue, and our access is at a fully signalized intersection, uh, which already exists.
Okay, fair enough.
Yeah, Mr. Cox, the only thing I would add to that is the widening of Wesley Chapel Boulevard is in the county's capital improvement plan and it's scheduled, I believe, in the next few years.
Okay. Now, you've addressed concerns. I mean, you know, Mr. Chairman, I, I would just say this, that the, the issue of the, the apartments continues to come up, but the facts are that the comp plan allows for the use of these properties in this fashion. So, and if the county commission doesn't want any more of them built and they need to put their big boy and girl, girl pants on and change the comp plan. But until they do that, I don't see where um, a project like this should be denied.
Well, I disagree with that one, that's for sure.
Well, that's okay. Were you making a motion, Michael?
Making a mo- no, I'll make the motion that we request based on increased traffic, parking congestion, which is minimal out there, but I'm more concerned about public safety. I live in that area. They just recently put that light at at the intersection. There are uh, ongoing building of or signage out there. So that's going in out there, right next to this area, by the way. Uh, it's uh, therefore I request that we deny this based on traffic, parking and law enforcement.
Um, so we have a motion. Uh, we have a second to that motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
We're hearing no second to the motion. I'll move for a move.
All right, so having a second to the motion that was made, we have a, another motion to approve the applicant. Uh, have the application. We have a second to that motion.
Miss Jamie Girardi, uh, I'll second that motion along the same lines as Mike. I mean, there's I, I don't see where we have basis to deny this and I, I've, I've agree and I find this you know, in agreement and conformance with the comp plan.
Mr. Chair, before you take the full um, the vote, um, I do want to mention that there is no one at the public comment kiosk on this item, nor have we received any emails of objection or any letters of objection up. Just for the, thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm gonna ask for that comment in just a minute. So we have a motion in a second? Any further comment on the motion?
Yeah, I have a few words.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Hansel's breaking up. We really can't hear him at all.
Mr. Hansel speaking. Yeah, I, I want to address the issue of the, the abundance of comp, of apartments in this area. Uh, as we know, or as you may know, there is one right in front of my community, Lexington Oaks, uh, which is not fully, uh, it's not full yet. There are, uh, there is one that is recently built at the intersection of, say, Wesley Chapel Boulevard and fifty, fifty-four basically across the street or near the uh, outlet mall in that area. Uh, there was recently one that was approved on Bruce B. Down. So what I'm trying to tell you folks is, we have an overabundance of apartments in that area. I thought the county at some point in time would do a study on the number of vacancies. There is no need for another apartment complex out there. It's that simple. And in a few, few years, and I don't know how many years down the road, you can anticipate some of these apartment complexes that are being built by individuals or corporations with relatively deep pockets will sometime in the near future find that there's a number of vacancies and these huge apartment complexes will begin to deteriorate. Didn't happen in other big cities. So I am, I would request again that you rethink your vote. You vote no. So I have a second.
Okay, any, are, are there any other comments or concerns?
I mean, Mr. Chairman, I let me just address Mr. Hansel. I, I mean, I agree with you on what you're saying. I personally think that there are plenty of apartments right now. But the fact is, is that this request is consistent with the comp plan. And ultimately, a decision to deny would have to be defensible in a court. And I don't, quite frankly, I, I do not believe that it's defensible right now. And if the county commission doesn't want to see any more of them built, then the county commission needs to change the comp plan. It's just that simple.
Yeah, well, that's, I think that's my, my concern too. You, you know, we need to we deny something like this, we need a leg to stand on and, you know.
I would like to make a comment. Roberto Saez?
I'm sorry, Roberto?
I would like to make a comment, um, in reference to this. In our last board meeting in twenty twenty, and I went through a similar um, project in Wesley Chapel, an apartment complex, and I, I was at a strong opposition to the development of this part. In the same time, after some research, I agree with Mr. Cox. We need a developer of the county commission make the changes to be able to sustain any kind of actions of denying for a developer who want to do this type of apartment complex in Pasco County. And I will, I, I will go against this project, but I'm pretty sure we cannot go farther. We, and we can uh, have our opposition, but in the same time, we cannot do much in, to, to stop this kind of development until the county commission make the adjustment and the changes that need to be done. So I just want to put that out of there and I agree with Mr. Cox and I agree with the, with Mr. Hell, so it's all I can say at this point. It's true straight up and like, we cannot do much. We have our hand tied.
All right, then Roberto, thank you. Okay, any other comment? Then uh, if we could uh, have a vote, uh, by roll call? Please? All in favor, signify by aye? Opposed, nay?
Jamie Girardi?
Hi.
Michael Cox?
Hi.
Peter Hansel? Roberto Saez?
Nay.
Christopher Poole? Chris Williams? Chairman Charles Gray?
Hi. Okay.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I think I heard five to two to approve, but I, it wasn't very loud. Is that correct?
It was.
Five to two.
That's for sure.
Okay, five, five to two, and thank you. Okay, five to two, and thank you all for your time. We appreciate it.
All right, thank you. Okay, anything else, Denise?
That's all we've got for today.
All right, darn.
So, Jer.
So, Jer? Motion to Jer, Chris Poole? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Bye, y'all.
Bye.